Sheriff, how's it going?
All right. I'm just trying to get us up. It's almost time to start.
Judge, we are live. The visual is still kind of messed up, but...
Huh, okay. But you can hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, maybe the video will get going. All right. Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, March 14th, 2023. It's now 10:00 a.m. We're here for the regular session in the Hunt County Commissioners' Court. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask Commissioner Martin to lead us in prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiances. Please rise.
Shall we bow? Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of life. We thank you for allowing us to come here and take care of the community business. May we do it in a righteous, knowledgeable, and with wisdom. We ask you to continue blessing this great country that we live in. In Christ's name, we ask these things. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, a pledge allegiance to thee, Texas. One state, under God, one indivisible. Thank you, everyone. We have Commissioner Hutchins, Monroe, Martin, and Harrison present. I'm Judge Stovall presiding over the meeting. Commissioners, you got the regular session minutes from February 28th, 2023. Entertaining motion for approval.
So move.
Second.
Entering motion second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. At this time, we'll have public testimony. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. The Commissioners' Court cannot take action on any items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff that may be placed on a future agenda or addressed by some other course of response. Do we have anybody wishing to speak today? Daniel, anybody online? No one wishing to speak. We'll close the public testimony. Do what? Oh, Dee, did you raise your hand? Oh, I'm sorry. I looked right past you. I didn't... Please, please come forward. I'm sorry. Of all the people to overlook, I can't believe I did that to you.
That's fine. Exactly where I belong, and I'll try to be civil. But I did want to just bring to you, and I gave each of you one of these annual reports. This is our February 2023 annual report. Got plenty here. I'd love for you to take them to your precincts and give them to constituents. We try to print this about every 18 months to update the citizens and taxpayers of Hunt County with regard to the bond issue that was passed in 2016, $24 million that they voted to spend on planning, design, and engineering for roads in Hunt County. The idea at that time was to try to leverage those funds to bring in additional state and federal construction dollars, and so far, that seems to have worked. I'd just point out a few things that are a little different in this report. Obviously, the front cover is different. If you look on the third page, you'll see a table there that's right under where it says yes for roads. Those are some of the projects for which money has been allocated by the state and federal sources, and you get an idea of how much the county taxpayers have spent so far on those projects or allocated to those projects, a little less than $7 million. And the total committed funds, including those dollars, are about $369 million. And we're fortunate that Texas DOT, the Texas Transportation Commission, has put a lot of money and committed a lot of money to rebuild the interchanges on I-30. And there'll be five of those rebuilt, plus one new and added. The first set has already been let, and the work will start on that later this month. And it'll take a couple of years to rebuild 1570 and 1903 interchanges and add U-turn lanes and make the Montney-Stratton interchange six lanes, whereas it's four lanes now. Then later in the year, 1565-36 and a new interchange at 2911 will be built between Royce City and Cattle Mills. And once all of that's done, then that's when the interstate will be six-laned and the additional travel lanes will be added. We're still about $155 million short to do the additional travel lanes from Royce City, basically to Montney-Stratton, but that we feel sure will be available by the time it's needed, by the time the rest of the projects are done. But the other projects listed here, the project in Commerce on 24, the 1570 project, those are all now fully funded, and those will be let hopefully this year. 1570 has an issue with some rules that Texas DOT has, but we're hoping that that will be accelerated and those can be built. So that's new. We continue to work on the 1903-36 project and try to get that shovel ready. Engineering should be complete this year, and then hopefully, Texas DOT will begin to acquire some right-of-way, because that's the project that, when you get to Cattle Mills High School, it's going to veer to the west and be a regional connector with FM6 that goes to Nevada and Josephine. The other thing that's new is on the back page at the bottom, we decided that it would be a good idea, and Bruce Ballard was very helpful with this. We went back and looked at what the projections were for the growth in the tax base in 2016, when this was presented to the voters, and we looked at what we projected. We projected about a 5% tax growth the first five years and then 3% thereafter. And then on the right, you can compare it with the actual. So 2022, we projected the tax base would be about $6.5 billion, and it's turned out to be $10.6 billion. So a little bit of difference in the tax base, which has meant that I think the debt service on this is about one penny. So it's very low. We told the voters that it might be as much as 3.2 cents, I believe it was, but it's turned out to be one penny. So anyway, this gives you an idea, and if you need more of these, we have plenty of these. And if you have any civic groups in your community that would like to have a presentation, I'll be glad to come and do a PowerPoint presentation for anybody that would like to see it. I don't know if you can entertain questions since this is public.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a statement. We appreciate you and the steering committee. We appreciate what y'all have done all these years. It just didn't start out in 2016. It started out many years before that that y'all have been a part and acted as a partner with this Commissioners' Court. I have high respect for y'all, and basically, we thank you for what you've done personally, but also the other members, because what you've done and have caused to happen, we couldn't have done it without y'all. I do thank you.
Well, you guys are the names that are on there, so you're the ones that have voted to issue the bonds and do the authorizations for the work to go forward, and we appreciate that support. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dee. All right. Now I'll officially close the public testimony. After. Thank you, Dee. No old business, new business. Commissioners, you got the consent calendar. Entertaining motion for approval?
So move.
Second.
Entering motion second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Approval of accounts payable.
Make a motion. We pay the bills.
Second.
Entering motion second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Approval of line item transfers.
Make a motion to approve line item transfers.
Second.
Entering motion second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. We have no budget amendments. Approval of payroll and personnel?
Make a motion. We approve payroll and personnel.
Entering motion second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action number one, a presentation to discuss fiber broadband plans for Frontier Communications. Jack, come forward and...
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Jack Phillips with Frontier Communications. Appreciate the opportunity to be here to talk about what we're doing in the county in terms of deploying fiber broadband. And with me is Allison Ellis. Allison is our senior vice president in our group. And Allison, were you going to make the presentation? Appreciate the opportunity to be here, and we'll be able to answer any questions, but we do have a slide deck presentation.
Okay. Which one you need me to do?
Blacktop.
Okay. Let's see. I gotta close that. Who knew that work?
Great. So thank you very much for inviting Frontier here today. We really appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all. As Jack said, I'm Allison Ellis. I'm SVP of Regulatory Affairs, and I am leading up our community partnership, community outreach group related to grants. Maybe let me sort of start at the beginning and give you a high level of Frontier. I'm sure it's a name that you're all familiar with. We've been in the community providing voice service for many years and then broadband service using our DSL technology. We originally deployed DSL technology at a time when people's need for connectivity was pretty modest, right? We were doing 1, 3, 5, 10 megabit service. And very quickly, people's needs for capacity outpaced our ability to expand our network and enhance our capabilities, because DSL technology is very expensive. It is distance-sensitive, so the further from town you are, the more your signal will degrade. And so people's experience over time, you know, really was less than positive with DSL service. We found ourselves as a company in a period of financial distress, and we entered into a restructuring, negotiated restructuring with our creditors, which we completed in May of 2021. So this actually was a very good thing for the company, because we eliminated $10 billion worth of debt. We emerged from the process as an entirely new company. We have an entirely new board of directors and an entirely new senior management team. And with that, we have a very clear vision for the company going forward. It's what we call Building Gigabit America. And what Building Gigabit America is, it's bringing fiber to the premises, you know, the premier level of internet connectivity to as many locations in our footprint as quickly as possible. Our new management is very focused on ensuring that people within our footprint, who are largely in smaller, more rural communities, have the exact same level of connectivity that their counterparts in big cities do. You know, it shouldn't be that you can only get the best internet experience if you're living in downtown Dallas. You should be able to get it in Hunt County as well. So this is just really a snapshot of where we are. So we announced a goal of 10 million locations, passing 10 million locations with fiber by the end of 2025. In December of this year, we hit the halfway mark, and, you know, some of that deployment has happened in Texas. We made this commitment as a company prior to there really being a lot of grant funding available for broadband expansion. So we see this as a really terrific opportunity, both with the state grant program and the federal grant program that is going to be opening up later this year. It's a great way to leverage our private investment with the investment of public funds in order to reach those locations that are a bit more expensive, a bit more rural, and difficult for private entities to justify, or fund, rather, deployment without assistance. Just to give you sort of a high level of fiber, I'm sure it's something that people are very familiar with. It really is the best technology in terms of performance and capability. Unlike copper, it's not distance-sensitive. Unlike copper, it is not subject to infiltration by water. So, you know, water and copper, they don't do well. So when it rains, you know, you can have static. You can lose connectivity. Fiber is a passive technology, end-to-end. It just needs to have power on either end of the connection, and it will work. So if you think about, you know, a storm where there's a commercial power outage, our central office has backup power capabilities. And if the house has a backup battery or a backup generator, connectivity will continue. That would be voice connectivity as well as internet connectivity. And Jack, we've lost the visual. One thing that I also wanted to emphasize is that fiber delivers the highest symmetrical capacity experience that's available today. So at the end of January, Frontier rolled out 5 gigabit symmetrical service across its fiber footprint. So this is 5,000 megabits up, 5,000 megabits down. We were the first company to do that for residential customers in the nation. This actually follows on being the first company to introduce gigabit service available across the nation in 2022. So what we are doing is, you know, we're building the network that communities need for tomorrow, not for what they need today or even, you know, certainly yesterday. Yeah. The benefits of fiber, you know, not just the personal experience with the internet, but the benefits of fiber for communities have been well researched and are well documented. You know, more economic growth, higher property values, you know, more reliable service, better access to telehealth services, remote schooling, remote work. So just to give you a sense of what our footprint in Texas looks like, this is very similar to what our footprint looks like in other states. We are a traditional telephone company in our history, and so we are organized according to wire centers. Wire centers don't perfectly overlap with county boundaries or municipal boundaries. I don't know who drew them up 100 years ago, but they didn't want to follow anything that was really logical. So we have a sort of a snapshot of footprint areas across the state. Texas is a really big state for us. Most of our senior management lives in the state of Texas. We have about 2,000 employees here. We have, you know, over 300,000 broadband and almost 300,000 voice customers. In Hunt County, we serve a little bit over 40% of the county, so our footprint covers 40% of the county. We have seven wire centers in the county, and we have about 18,000, almost 19,000 locations that are what we consider to be serviceable addresses. So those are addresses in our footprint where there is a residence or a business. Okay. So this just gives you a quick snapshot of what the current maps look like in terms of unserved and underserved locations within the county. So determining where internet is, you think would be a lot easier than it actually is. We look at data that we report, data that other providers report. We look at our, you know, third-party sources of information, state and local information about unserved and underserved areas. You might be aware that the FCC is doing a very large mapping project. It's called the BDC Mapping Project, where the initiative is to get information at the specific location level. Previously, the FCC was only capturing information at the census block level, and that was really understating the need for connectivity, because if one location within the census block was covered with broadband, the entire census block was considered covered. And we know that, you know, you could have one location, and then you could have 50 locations that did not have service. So the BDC map is getting at a more granular level, but it's just... They just released the first version of it in January, and it still needs a lot of help. But this will give you a sense. Unserved is where there's not currently 25 megabits up, 3 megabits down. And underserved is where there's not currently 100 up, 200 down. The symmetrical nature of the connectivity is really important. So one thing that we all learned in the pandemic was that it's really important to have a very fast upload as well as a very fast download. We historically, both as a company and as individuals, were really worried about, how fast is my download? How quickly can I get my Netflix, you know? And we were less concerned with, how fast can we get information up into the web? With interactive applications like remote schooling, like WebEx, Zoom, Teams, you really need to have a fast upload as well for that to be a seamless experience for the user. So that's why a fiber-type network is really important, because it provides that symmetrical capability that other technologies like fixed wireless or cable can't deliver. And this is just another map. I wanted to give you not a satellite view, just to kind of give you a sense of where the eligibility is. So when we, under our new management, recognizing that we had underperformed for consumers in the past, you know, we really want to be the technology provider and providing the best customer service experience that we can. So under our new management, we surveyed our customers, and we asked our customers, what matters to them for their broadband service? What is most important to them? And then we built our flagship offer around what the customer feedback was, and that's our gig-level service, one gig up, one gig down. Customers said they were very price-sensitive, so we priced that at $69.99 per month. That's a very competitive rate compared to our alternative providers. Customers said that they wanted to have a better in-home Wi-Fi experience. And so we partnered with Amazon to bring customers the Eero Pro 6 router. There are two included in our internet offer. This uses the latest Wi-Fi standard. It has a very robust signal in the home. You know, you don't have dead spots. You don't have dropped calls or dropped connections. I actually had a customer in West Virginia just last week tell me that he set up his service, and he tested it across the street at his neighbor's house, and he was still getting a gig service. Now, that's not going to be everybody's experience, but it does demonstrate that it's a very strong signal, and it is intended to ensure that there are no areas within your home where you can't get Wi-Fi service. Customers said they didn't want to pay extra for their Wi-Fi router, so again, two are included in the gig-level service. When we talk also about deploying broadband, so one of the things that we do is we deploy it down the street, and then we actually don't deploy it to the consumer until the consumer orders service, right? Because we're not going to go on private property unless we're specifically asked. But we have built and architected our network so that we can provide that service to customers generally within 10 days of ordering service, and we just want to do it sooner than that. We also have a program that we participate in called the Affordable Connectivity Program. So this is funded by the federal government. It provides a discount on service to income-eligible consumers. And the way that the federal government has defined eligibility, it actually captures a lot of people. I think the estimates are about 40% of the people nationwide qualify for this benefit. So we have developed a 100-over-100-megabit offer, and with the federal credit, that's $0 to a customer. Customers can also use that $30 credit to buy up service, so if they want a higher tier of service. 100-over-100 is a very robust level of connectivity. It will allow customers to do remote schooling, working from home, having multiple users on the connection all at the same time. One of the things that people don't necessarily think about is how many connections they actually have in their home that are simultaneously using the internet. You know, you'll have your doorbell is potentially internet-connected, your thermostat, your, you know, Alexa speakers, your phone is being connected to your home Wi-Fi, your computers, your tablets. These things add up in a household. It's not uncommon for one household with four people to have, you know, 30 devices connected. So one of the things that we are doing is we, as a company, had typically not been very involved in partnering with communities or working to get grant dollars. It's just not something that we historically did or focused on. Our new management very much wants to ensure that we are working in partnership with the communities, because, you know, our goal is to ensure that fiber connectivity is available to all of our customers within our footprint. And so, you know, we really do need to work in partnership with communities in order to do that. We have found that we are most successful in getting grants and bringing federal dollars into communities when we partner with the community, when we have a very clear agreement. And, you know, oftentimes, the grant programs will award additional points if there's a financial contribution from the community. Some communities have been using ARPA funds, if they have that, in order to, you know, demonstrate that community support. Others have been using general revenue. You know, I will be across our footprint, so across the 16 or so states where we filed grant applications thus far, they've really ranged. You know, some of the contributions have been very modest, and some have been larger because the community wants to ensure 100% coverage. The other thing that is very helpful is if we can work together on permitting and that sort of thing for doing construction projects. What we find is that, you know, we can have a project ready to go, and if we have a permitting issue, it can delay a project. It can cause us to have to move crews to another area, and it can take some time to get them back into the community in order to finish the deployment. And so that's an area where it's, you know, we would love to work with you and municipal leaders in order to ensure that our deployment can go as quickly as possible for the benefit of consumers. We typically deploy our network in two ways. We do both arially and underground. So where we're on the poles and where there are poles, we will overlash our fiber onto the poles. That is a very cost-effective and quick way to do the deployment. You know, we can deploy arially like 350,000 feet of fiber in a week. With the underground, obviously, that takes a little bit more time, but we typically try to do it in the least disruptive way for consumers as possible in the community. So we try to use microtrenching to the fullest extent that we can, directional boring, or, you know, what's called missling, in order to get into neighborhoods and areas without having to tear up the streets and, you know, cause that difficulty for folks. And when we are doing a deployment, you know, another area where we would love to work with the county is to make sure that we are working together to prepare and educate the residents about what's happening in the community and the benefits. You know, construction is construction. It's always going to be a bit disruptive. You know, we work to try to minimize the disruption as much as possible, but, you know, we're going underground in some instances, and even when you do the markings, you're not necessarily aware of what's under there until you actually open up the ground. We go through, we do door hangers in areas where we're going to be doing deployment. You know, we provide an 800 number for consumers to call if they have questions. One of the things that many residents don't understand is the front of their property that they may have been maintaining for years and years and years is actually the easement and, you know, where the utilities are. So, you know, that is something where we have revised our door hanger several times to try to ensure that we're communicating to customers that we're in a place, you know, where we're permitted to be. that we're in a place, you know, where we're permitted to be, and that we will restore the, you know, if we upset the lawn or landscaping, that we will restore that to as good or better over time. The one thing that I think consumers don't always appreciate is that the crew that is doing the, the construction is not the same crew that comes back and does the landscaping. And it doesn't necessarily happen the same day because we want to make sure that the network is up and working before we do all of the restoration so that we don't have to do restoration, then come back and, you know, do something additional, and then do the restoration again. So sometimes there's a lag between when we do the construction in a neighborhood and when we come back and do the landscaping. But we're fully committed to coming back and doing the landscaping, ensuring that, you know, people's property is, you know, not negatively impacted by the deployment.
So if I could, just a quick background on the state broadband program, the grant program, and kind of what, what you can do to help us. You may be familiar with this, but there's $450 million available through state program for reaching these unserved and underserved locations. Those rules just came out about a week ago, and they've opened the grant window. The grant window closes May 5th. And one of the things we'd like to do to help secure that some of that state funding comes to Hunt County is to work with you to basically get a, basically a partnership arrangement. It could include any of several things. Any support you can provide from a financial perspective, even a modest amount goes a long ways. One of the things, the scoring criteria is for demonstration of community support. And to the extent even a modest financial contribution towards the project would go a long ways towards helping securing state funding, which basically leverages that funding. As Allison said, the permitting process, anything can be done to help with the permitting process to expedite that. Does two things. One, it helps reduce the project cost, but it also expedites the, our ability to, the quickness, the deployment of, of our service. And another thing that can be done is with low income, the county dealing with low-income households, anything can be done. Allison talked about the low-income program. In many cases, you, you're, you have agencies that work with low income that are eligible, that are in a position to work with them to identify those people and help get them enrolled in, in service. And one of the things we've done with some of the communities is gotten a memorandum of understanding or cooperation. It's just a memo from the, the county that addresses like permitting process, that we're going, to the extent there are support structures, if there's any conduit, help on enrollment, making greater awareness of the low-income program. Those are things that can be put into a memo of understanding or cooperation that we can file with the state, which will help demonstrate that there's support for the project in the county and help direct those funds to the county. So we'd like to work with you over the next couple of weeks. Again, the, the deadline for the filing for this round is May 5th. So we'd like to have that in place by then.
Sure, the dollar amounts, is there some requirement for a percentage of community support or y'all's support to get the grant? Is a grant 100% of the cost, projected cost of putting it in?
It varies generally. I would say is, on average, we're providing at least 50% of the project cost for the, for the eligible. I'll break this into two pieces.
Company is providing 50% of the cost, is that what you're saying?
That, no, so let me break this into two parts. We've got our plan bill that we're planning on doing anyway. We're funding 100% of that on our own, on the projects, the areas that we plan on serving. Then the areas that are eligible for funding, we're generally providing, I would say, on average, about 50% of that frontier is, and getting about 50% from the state. Generally, as Allison said, and we've had contributions from counties as low as about 20, 25,000 up to like 3 million. And the, the more, in some, some instances, even just a small token amount will help go a long ways towards a demonstration that the county's behind the project.
How do we get the advertising out for the low income? Do y'all do that, or is that something that we're going to have to do, or?
Yes, so we do advertise it. We would love to, you know, work with you to make sure that the target communities, you know, have access to that information. Some county commissions have put it on their website, you know, a link to make sure that customers are aware of it. And one thing I also just wanted to emphasize about grant projects. What we do, as Jack and I have both mentioned, we're doing a lot of self-financed expansion. So when we look at a grant-eligible project, we will look at that project, and we will see how we can complement it with additional self-financed expansion within that area. So if we can get a, let's say there are, you know, 1,000 locations. If we can get a grant for 1,000 locations, that actually will help us coordinate a broader project where we can bring fiber to the premises to many more people in and around the grant location.
Okay, on this grant, are y'all going to be applying to do everything you showed on the map of the underserved and not served, or whatever the two breakdowns were?
Yeah, so that's just why I wanted to jump up. We would love to talk with you about the specifics of the grant proposal and specifics of a project. We're not able to do that in a public setting.
Okay.
So if you have a work group or, you know, other way that we can do it on a more confidential basis, we would absolutely be prepared to do that.
Y'all can contact my office, and Jessica will set something up. I'll have that information. And we, I'll get, we can only have two people at a time, so we'll, we'll get somebody, if somebody wants to volunteer later, we'll, I'll get somebody to help me. I'll let them do it, and I'll get out of the way.
We can also have several meetings, you know.
Right.
You advised that you're under new management as far as frontier. When did this new management start?
In 2021. So we have been operating under the new management for, you know, well over a year. When we talk about doing the fiber expansion, so last year, we actually passed more than a million homes, 1.2 million. And we started the year with a goal of a million homes, and halfway through, we determined that we had honed our deployment strategies and our processes, and we're going to be able to connect more than a million homes.
We've had, the reason I'm asking this is we've had frontier putting in this broadband all over the place, especially in my precinct. Under the new management, it's been going on over a year and a half. Are the contacts still the same, or are they changing?
For the community, they're the same.
Okay, I've heard very, what was your name, sir?
Good afternoon, my name's Steve Higgins. I'm the construction manager for North Texas.
Okay, have you, I have some gentleman's name that we've been contacting when we do have a problem as far as putting in boxes and stuff like that. They're still the same ones, I guess. If we may get your name also to where we can call in. And I would like a copy of everything that y'all put up here. Now, this all started under the COVID and risk ARPA and all this, but well, y'all been getting straight federal money, basically. So am I correct? Y'all been getting federal government money all this time in order to start this?
Yeah.
The, the federal funding, so there's two sources of funding. One is the federal, and one's the state.
Yes.
The state passed in the prior legislative session the $450 million.
Okay.
And that is just now being opened up. So no applications have yet been filed in, under that program.
How much was the federal?
So the federal, the BEAT program, the funding that's coming down for that will be announced, there's $45 billion available nationwide for infrastructure deployment. And that program will not, the state funding will not be announced until June 30th.
Okay, but they've already had some of this funding out because y'all been doing the work, am I correct?
No, so just, I just want to confirm. The deployment that we've been doing in and around Hunt County having privately financed? This has all been privately financed fiber expansion?
Privately funded, is that frontier funding?
Yes, frontier funded, yes, sorry, self-funded.
Okay, there were some areas that I had inquisitive about that spectrum was not entering into. It'd be, for instance, roads that don't stop, I mean, there are roads that dead end and stuff like that. Have y'all, have y'all come to a conclusion? What I have been telling the people, what they need to do is contact Frontier or Spectrum to find out which one's going to... They've come all the way up to the road, but didn't go down this one. So I'll continue, need to be saying that correct?
Yeah, so anywhere that you have in your district where you believe that there is a, a need, we would love to hear that. We'd love that detailed information. One of the things, when we partner with the community, is we want to make sure that we understand your priorities and that we're working to fulfill those priorities as well. I mean, that's what partners do. So if there are areas in your community where, you know, there isn't connectivity, we'd like to hear about that so that we can see if we can include those in a project.
The main problem that I've had in my area has been tremendously, they decide that they want to put the box right in the middle of the ditch, and we've had a lot of rain and everything just floating away. Am I making sense?
Yeah, no, that has been a problem.
Yes.
The covers are plastic, they do float if they're not.
I bet they're supposed to be screwing them down, but they're not.
Well, they're in a way for doing maintenance on the road, too, for the...
That's right, you're correct.
We're working through that, primarily building Quinlan, Tewocan area, and up in Cato Mills.
Yeah.
Cato Mills, sorry. And in those areas, Cato is actually in the middle of the build. We probably have another couple of months to go. And then Quinlan and Tewocan areas are, the buried side of it is completely done. The aerial portion of it is struggling because we're waiting for permits from FEC, Farmers Electric. But you are correct, there are some close, and I've talked to Judge Stovall a few times about things, and Jessica as well. So we will commit to fixing those.
With a copy of this here that we have, I would like to have your mobile number where we can call direct. I can't remember. Do I have his? Okay, cool.
We also have a complaint hotline that we put together in the last couple of months.
Okay.
It's really organizing and coordinating all the complaints that come through, you know, ruts in the yard, handholds with not covers on it, and we're a bit addressing those daily.
I want to thank the judge for having y'all up here. This should have been done about a year and a half ago. But I truly say that because it has caused a lot of havoc. But we appreciate you coming.
We very much appreciate you all giving us so much time today. You know, we recognize that we have not done a great job historically interfacing with communities, and we would really like to improve that. So, you know, you do have, you know, our construction lead here. You have his information. You will have my information and Jack's information. You're, you're all more than welcome to reach out to us if you have issues. Again, we want to make sure that we understand what your community priorities are so that we can work together to try to fulfill them.
I have, I have one question, sorry. Just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, the, the partnership, community partnership you envision with us, is that primarily financial in nature, or is strategic planning the primary goal there?
It's, I would say it's not primarily financial. I mean, certainly to the extent that there is funding that could help make a project more competitive and therefore more likely to get funded by the state and ultimately the federal government. We would love to work together on that. But really, you know, there are a lot of ways that we can work together to ensure that we're connecting everybody, right? So exchanging address information. If you have information about existing conduit that may be available to us, that we could incorporate into our engineering plans and design work, you know, obviously, that would be ideal. As Jack said, you know, working on permitting to streamline the permitting process. In some communities, we've been given blanket permits because we've been on the poles, you know, for 50-plus years, and, you know, community leaders know where to find us. In other instances, you know, it's identifying the community anchor institutions that are in high need and, you know, ensuring that we have the connections with those community leaders in order to make sure that, you know, we're building what's needed. You know, you also have intelligence about the community, whether, you know, you're looking at additional towers or something like that, and there might be an opportunity to ensure that there's sufficient backhaul for that new tower. One of the things that people don't necessarily understand is that with your wireless service, that's, that signal gets down to a wired connection as quickly as possible across the nation, as quickly as possible. And in order to do that, you have to have a really large ability to transmit that data. So that's a need that we can help fulfill. We, but it helps for us to know in advance when we're doing the construction if there's something planned that we can, you know, make sure that we have the capacity to accommodate.
Okay, well, thank y'all for coming today, and we look forward to working with you. Our citizens need high-speed internet, for sure. So whatever we can do to help make that happen.
Thank you for accommodating us. I just, one quick thing, you know, letters of support are something that, from a broad range of individuals and institutions in the community are something that can be done, you know, at no cost, very easy to do, and they're very effective. And especially, like I said, getting from abroad, from agriculture, healthcare, schools, the county, and individual residents and businesses, economic development groups. So appreciate.
Thank you.
Yeah, and yes, anything that can be said in those letters about the economic impact and, you know, some kind of meaningful stories in terms of what it really means to the community are really, you know, carry a lot of weight with the state when they're evaluating the proposals.
Thank you, we look forward to working with you. All right. Action item number two. Treasurer's monthly report for January 2023. Entertaining motion for approval?
Shall move.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Hey Richie? Action item three. Rate increase for substitute court, substitute court reporters from $350 per day to $400 per day agreed upon by both the 196th and 354th District Judges and County Court Law Number One and County Court Law Number Two judges. Commissioners, apparently, we've been having a need for more court reporters, and we're working our court reporters probably harder than we need to, and it's getting kind of be a crisis. We're not getting new court reporters in the system. And in order to maintain the level of staffing we have, the judges are asking for this increase in pay to help make sure that we continue to keep our courts working. Want to entertain a motion for approval?
Shall move.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number four. Request to work within County Ridaway along County Road 1001. Installation of two 45-foot Class 5 wood poles. Remove three existing wood poles. Conduit will go underneath in between these two new poles with 600-foot of one slash O aluminum primary and two-inch conduit. We will remove the overhead spans of existing conductor. All underground conduits will have a minimum depth of three foot under normal stipulations in Precinct One, as requested by Encore.
Make a motion, will you approve this request, Judge?
I'll second it.
Got a motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item five. Request for permission to install overhead facilities inside the Ridaway, County Road 4309. Proposed to install 33 40-foot wood poles, six 45-foot wood poles, replace four 35-foot wood poles, and install approximately 7,000 feet of overhead single-phase conduit. All road crossings will have a minimum vertical clearance of 22 feet under normal stipulations in Precinct Four Encore.
Make a motion to approve this?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item number six. Request to construct electrical power distribution facilities, which will be in the Ridaway of County Road 2242 and Precinct Two.
Make a motion that we approve this?
Second.
With normal stipulations, I guess?
Yes, under normal stipulations.
Got a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item number seven. Precinct Three road inventory revisions, correction letters, no upgrade attached. Philip?
Yes, sir. What this has to do with basically having an improvement from rap oil that's a hard surface, we're changing them all in reference to it being considered oil. There's no upgrade in reference to it because this is a hard surface. I do make a motion that we allow these inventory revisions to take place.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Action item number eight, Adding CR Ideal Circle Point 454 Miles 2,400 Foot Rock in Lakeview Heights, Number One, to Precinct Three Road Maintenance Inventory Rightof Way 50-foot, 100-foot, what does that rest of that mean, Philip?
50-foot, 104B page. What this has to do with, that's the inventory aspect of it, was a 50-foot. This was Lakeview Heights. It's off of 276. It's also considered County Road 3610, but also is considered Contee. It's also considered Ideal Circle. This road has been maintained all this time. In actuality, I'm trying to make it right in our inventory. I'm asking that the 2,400-foot on Ideal be accepted under the maintenance program because it's already been under the maintenance program, but not on record since 2001.
Okay.
That's a motion.
That's a motion.
So what about all the names?
Pardon?
What about all the different names?
We're leaving it 3610, that's what the...
Okay, all right.
With the exception of Ideal, and that will still be Ideal Circle in reference to it. Because the rural post office has all the ones at the first part that was considered Contee. They have it as Contee, not 3610, but also Ideal. They have all those addresses as Ideal. So we'll leave it like it is and then we'll correct the whole thing.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number nine, Upgrade of Approximately 1,350 Feet of County Road 1052 from Rock to Oil Sand in Precinct One. Money is in escrow.
Make a motion, will you approve this upgrade?
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 10, Upgrade of Approximately 1,080 Feet of County Road 1110 from Rock to Oil Sand in Precinct One. Money is in escrow.
Make a motion, will you approve this upgrade?
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 11, Widening the Road Five Foot for Approximately 125 Feet of County Road 4301 of Dirt to Rock and Rock to Oil Sand in Precinct Four. Money is in escrow.
Make a motion to approve this upgrade.
Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 12, Upgrade of Approximately 75 Feet of County Road 4313 from Dirt to Rock in Precinct Four. Money is in escrow.
Make a motion to approve this upgrade.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item 13, Acknowledgement of Two-Year Maintenance Bond for Kettle Crossing in Precinct Two. Brian, you want to brief us?
Last Commissioners' Court, Kettle Crossing Phase Two came up for the approval of the final plat and the completion of the construction. They produced the maintenance bond with the dates on it, and this is just acknowledging that that maintenance bond is there. This is to get that maintenance bond.
Just finalize in the acceptance of that road?
That's correct.
That's whole subdivision.
Yet it's just starting the two-year maintenance bond.
Yeah, okay. All right, entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion, will you accept this warranty bond, two-year maintenance agreement?
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 14, Final Plat of Barham Edition in Precinct One.
And actually, this is in Precinct Three, not Precinct One.
Okay.
This is down private roads. It's just right off the end of the county maintenance. Commissioner Martin is requesting that they do some repair on that road prior to recording the plat, so I recommend a conditional approval pending that.
Your Honor, this is on 3603. Am I correct?
Nob Hill, yes.
Okay, Nob Hill. What the problem is on this is our maintenance stops right there where the rightof Way begins in reference to this property. I have no problem, but we have enough roads around there that are not able to be fixed because it's private. It's got, and I was talking to him, and we have done this and others, there's no working association down there for this area. There's not association. But I feel like this right here, if they're going to split it up and sell it and all this, they can at least throw gravel on the frontage of that road to help it make it work. And from my understanding, this is not wrongfully to be asking this, since of our rules and regulations.
We got road maintenance up to the east end of this property, is that what it is?
Up to the west.
Up to the west corner?
Yes.
It's public road and then it's private going from then on?
Correct.
Okay.
All the other ones that we've had in the past, basically, even with the homeowners associations, the people got together and said, okay, they dealt with the homeowners association. To my knowledge, there's not a working homeowners association there. May I...
Want to make a motion to what you just said?
Brian, are they required to do this upgrade condition per our subdivision regulations?
According to the subdivision regulations, the road is supposed to be to county standard for the plat to be approved.
Your Honor, I'll make the motion in reference to the stipulation B, that they upgraded as far as gravel with us looking at it, making sure.
Is it gravel? Is it our public road gravel?
It's gravel right now, but...
Is the county's road gravelled also?
Yes.
It's gravel right now, but it's getting ready to be oil. We tore the whole thing up. We did it with gravel. Now we're going back with oil from 3602 all the way to where the county signs says county maintenance. It will all be...
If it's there and we're right against it, why wouldn't we make them...
Pardon?
If you're fixing to upgrade our road to an oil sand road all the way to there, why wouldn't we make them go ahead and upgrade the road in front of this, these new lots?
Well, this is, it's not an upgrade. It's basically, it was oil. It was oil all this time.
Which one? Our road or their?
Our road was oil. Three weeks ago, we put gravel over all of it. We're getting ready to go on and oil it all.
So you're...
You're repairing.
So you're repairing an existing oil road?
Yes.
By upgrading the base and then putting new oil sand?
Yes, sir.
Again, I guess that's even more why I would say, why wouldn't we not ask them to upgrade the road in front of their place?
I would have no problem with that if we can actually say, hey, we can allow you are required to.
Whether the road's private maintained or county maintained, the subdivision regs say that it has to be upgraded to county spec.
Okay, the thing about it is...
So this is, really is an unplatted area.
It is an unplatted private area. I believe this is one of the old unrecorded plats from...
Way back.
Way back.
What my problem is, is I cannot upgrade it. They would have to go out.
It's privately maintained.
No, I understand that.
I could not do an upgrade on it even if they gave us money because it would, they would have to have it done.
Correct.
So that's another reason, basically.
Brian, have you spoken with them about a maintenance agreement, contract between the future landowners?
Uh, no, no. If they wanted to organize an HOA or road maintenance group, that'd be up to them. I haven't. I've spoken with the surveyor. I've spoken with the developer on this.
That whole area beyond this I'm talking about telegraph, that whole area is private. That whole area is like basically somebody bombed the rock. And basically, I feel like this right here, I would feel good. I don't know whether these, the people are rebuilding a house, and then they're going to divide it up. Now, whether they're selling this or not, I have no idea. You might that. But I'm thinking we're doing good if we get the thing rocked. I mean, I'm being honest with you because I can't do it. I can't do the upgrade or anything like that, and the expenditure would be different.
Well, I guess my concern is that we're, you know, we're never going to get these cleaned up and in better shape where we don't have all the complaints from the public. And that they're not having, we're not having trouble with emergency vehicles if we get the opportunity to, you know, get this little section, whatever it is, 300 feet fixed.
Is it 300?
360 feet of frontage.
Yes.
Well, what happens next week, if somebody comes in and turns a plat in, it's 500-foot down the road, and it just keeps, it's just keeping wor, it gets worse, and then they find out somebody else did that, and they're going to keep doing it, and the road's never going to get improved. It's just going to get worse because they're going to put more and more traffic on it. If we don't, you know, use our authority to have them upgrade the road to our standards so that we got at least a chance of them keeping it maintained.
What was the comeback and reference to these people? They don't even live out there, but they're redoing it.
No, I haven't heard back from them. I notified the surveyor and had not heard a response from the developer on upgrading the road or preparing the road or anything else.
Judge, I hear and understand you. I think my primary concern would be that regardless of what the road surface is, somebody has to be responsible for maintaining it. And, I mean, it can be upgraded to oil and then not maintained, and we know this from other roads, that it's almost worse when they're not maintaining that.
I understand, but when we're allowing people to put more traffic on already a bad situation, are we really doing what we're supposed to be doing? I mean, we're not helping our emergency vehicles at all. You know, we're just going to make it worse putting more traffic on there. So when we get a call for an ambulance or fire engines to go down that way and they can't pass the road, and we start letting, we allow one, and we got to allow them all.
Well, here's something else.
We got them all over the county like this. I mean, you got them in your precinct like this. And if we let them subdivide and put more traffic on it, we're just impacting the area worse, and it's causing the neighbors more problems.
If there's an agreement and an obligation to maintain it as a rock road in good condition, I think that would satisfy the needs of public safety.
This is an existing private, probably been in existence for...
660s.
That's right.
It's been in 660s.
It services probably 20 or 30 smaller lots, couple of larger tracks down there, and I don't think you could go in and force everybody to create an HOA or a road maintenance agreement. Some of the people down there, you just, they don't have a dog in the fight. They're not plating this. This is one single property owner. And you don't necessarily want to make them have a road maintenance agreement for this small section and then no one else have a road maintenance agreement. Or like you said, if someone gets back down in there, 1,000-foot past this, you don't want to have them to have a separate road maintenance agreement for their little section in front, so...
I hear you. The challenge is if we require them to upgrade it to, say, our equivalent of an oil sand road or something, chip seal, something like that, and they still do not maintain it. It will eventually, over time, deteriorate, but the problem will be that surface is more difficult to maintain, more expensive to maintain and repair. So it actually compounds the problem down the road because it is beyond people's means to do so.
What's the shot? Rock is certainly easier for your homeowner.
Where are we on the shot clock on this?
What?
Is it?
This is it.
Okay.
I make a motion that we accept this plat with the agreement that they basically put gravel on that road for that 300-foot of the width of those two lots. And I can't have an agreement to make them go into a contract of keeping it up after that. I don't believe so. I don't believe we have the authority to do that, but we can say stipulation, put gravel on the road at least eight inches.
Well, you're, Daniel, doesn't the motion have to be that we're grain in a variance from our subdivision requirements to...
Is that different from the subdivision?
Yeah.
Gravel is, yes.
Yeah, so the motion needs to be is...
Give them a variance in reference to, give them a variance in reference to...
With a variance that they don't have to match our road requirements and the subdivision rules, but they have to put in some amount of rock on it. You need to tell them how much, two inches of rock or six inches of rock?
Eight inches.
Eight inches of rock, some amount of rock.
And the motion also mean that they have the choice to either do the eight inches of rock or bring it up to county standard? If that latter is cheaper?
The gravel would be very much cheaper.
Okay. Then that motion is fine.
That motion's fine, okay.
But it needs to be seconded.
Yeah, got a motion? Anybody second? No second, and motion fails for lack of second. I guess the plat is denied. Or we have to make another motion, Daniel, to deny it?
If you stays with specificity why it's denied, I heard the shot clock rules, and then we have to send them a letter saying...
So we have to make a motion to that effect, or we just have to state why it's turned down?
Yeah, well, there has to be court action stating this.
So we need a motion saying that it's been denied for lack of meeting the subdivision rules as to the condition of the road?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, I entertain a motion that I just stated.
Move.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item 15, I can't read my writing, final.
Well, Judge...
Oh, that's, this one, we just got to add the final plat. We approved it last time.
That's right.
Of court minutes number 18,000.
On the February 14th.
On February 14th meeting. And what do we need to do to finalize it?
This one, what it is, is one of the lots on this plat that was...
Oh, that's right, that they removed it, yeah.
Is required to have a finished floor elevation.
So originally, we approved it with 10 lots, and now they've resubmitted it with nine lots because we required them to do a flood study on one lot because part of it was in the flood plain. And now they pulled that one out. So, Daniel, they've, so we approved it.
Yes.
But then this is, so this is a whole new plat, and the other one just goes away even though we approved it on a condition?
You would withdraw the previous conditional approval from February 14th Commissioners' Court.
What we need to do?
Yeah, and it needs to be all in one motion.
All in one motion, okay. So I entertain a motion to withdraw the approval from February 14th, 2023 meeting, court minutes 18,000, if I'm reading my handwriting right. And approved, the final plat is submitted today on Soto Ranchettes in Precinct One.
So move, Judge, and just want to point out that we do have money in escrow also for this.
Okay. All right.
I'll second it.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 16, Final Plat of Hartline Edition in Precinct Three.
This is an easy one.
Yes.
It's got the frontage. It's on state rightof way. There are existing buildings, existing utilities servicing this. He's just dividing up part of his complex out there, so...
Did you figure out that drainage easement we were looking at yesterday?
I have not heard back on that yet. So there may be a potential slight change, but from the way I'm looking at it now, it doesn't look like it's going to affect these lots or affect it.
Commissioners, what we're talking about on the west side of Lot One, there's a drainage easement on the adjacent lot, and it looks like the frontage of that is a lot narrower than the back of that drainage easement. And I was just wanting to double check and make sure, because generally those would be the same width all the way through. They'd get a 50-foot drainage easement or 100, whatever it is, so it looks like. So I don't know if it's a drafting error and actually that comes over onto this Lot One, which would change where our 10-foot utility easement and drainage easement need to move over to. So I just wanted to verify that this is the easement as it is shown is correct.
The way it looks, whenever I was trying to dig back through everything yesterday, it looks like because of that north line being skewed, it probably pulled it in a little... it looks like because of that north line being skewed, it probably pulled it in a little bit.
That was the property line? That was an old property line?
Correct.
Okay.
So I think it's going to be okay there.
But we need to double check it. So I think we ought to make a motion, entertain a motion to approve the plat of Hartline Edition with the stipulation that we get clarity on the drainage easement along the west side of Lot One.
Show move.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 17, the final plat of Riverside Acres Phase Two in Precinct Four.
This is a second phase of one that was already built and approved and upgraded and all that. This is just around the corner from it. He has paid for the road upgrade already for the road widening, and he's got the new utilities in and has all frontage. So in fact, the road widening was approved on this agenda, just.
Okay. All right, entertain a motion for approval?
Show move.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Daniel, are there any other comments on the line?
No.
No, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session under items one through four.
Show move.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We're going into executive session in 1111. Thank you, everyone. Did we get you confused on any of that?
I wrote all kinds of notes.
I make sure I got, I think I got, they looked those minutes up from 214. Probably need to double check that 18,000. I think that's what it was.
Yeah, I wrote that all.